So we're gonna call this meeting's order not at 6:02, but at 7:02. Thank you, Donna. Okay, first thing up, we're gonna review and approve the minutes from April 7th, 2016. Any changes? Everybody get a chance to come over? Can I have a motion for that?
One more.
Can I have a second?
Second.
You can't.
Oh, you can't.
I'll second.
Okay. So, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from April 7th, 2016? Opposed? Abstain? One abstain? Everybody else two?
Three.
Three. Lynn Roberts abstain. Bill Smith, so three abstains. Okay, so now I need a motion to review and approve the revised minutes of March 8th, 2016. So move, do I have a second? Do you need seconds?
No, I just wanted to...
Anybody wanna discuss? Bob, do you wanna clarify?
Well, this is the change that we made in the March meeting. And as to where the money was coming, and so it was much more clear that what we were doing was paying those expenses in 2016 relative than in 2017. Those items were moved from 2017, we paid in 2016, and it was a transfer from excess and deficiency that covers the shortfall.
Okay, and because it was kinda detailed like Keith just said, we decided to approve the revised minutes. So all those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Who has to abstain?
I think the new paper had something in there that was wrong relative to the Conway
So Keith has to, Lynn has to.
There's something wrong with it.
And so there's two abstentions, Bob.
Got it.
Got so many papers. Yeah, there's a lot of papers tonight. Sorry. Okay, so we're gonna move along, and financial statements?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Might I interpose a point of pardon my entry procedure here? Could we perhaps rail upon the new member to introduce himself?
That's actually on me. So yes, you can. Damien Fosn.
Fosno.
Fosno Tyler Sondland. Okay, Damien, this is everyone. So now we'll throw it back to you, Phil.
Wonderful.
We'll introduce ourselves.
Phil Cantor, Conway.
Judy here, Sunderland.
Lynn Roberts, Sunderland.
Bob Decker, Deerfield.
Bob Hallen, Whately.
Patty Cameron.
Patty Barrett.
It's been you, Matt Conway.
Bill Smith, Whately.
Mary Raven, Deerfield.
Thank you.
Is he even wearing a problem?
My phone's Deerfield.
Deerfield, okay.
I went and introduced myself, that's why. Oh, well done. We're done with that. Bob Lettsco, oh, yeah, he's taking Alan's position. The priest, this is Father Darius. Okay, thank you, Phil. Okay, so now we'll go to financial statements.
Good evening. Tonight you have 26 warrants in an total amount of $1,462, 559, and 7 cents. The purple folder should be going around for signature. You have your April report in front of you. We are running some variances, but I still see us ending up in the good towards the, for the end of the year. We do, I am having Mr. Lettsco chase down some bills, because we did have a little bit of plowing, and even though it's May 10th, I don't have those bills yet. So Mr. Lettsco is going to chase those bills down, as well as any backlog of jamrock billing that we tend to get towards the end of the year. We're shaking all those trees right now, so that we'll have everything accounted for. We did finally pay for the elevator, and what we did was we negotiated a five-day penalty, so we saved about $1,200. I tried to get some damages for being stuck in the elevator, but it just weren't funny.
I think we considered that entertainment.
Yes, everyone else did. So that's all I have. Oh, and you did get mailed last week your audit reports from Scanlon, and they will be here in June to discuss the audit report with you. I will not be here, so if there's any questions you guys have for me, could you email me prior? That's all I have, unless Mr. Decker has some questions.
Well, I just noticed that in one of the reports, there was...
Well, not about that, Bob.
No, we can't talk about that tonight.
It's June, Bob. Do you have some other questions?
No, I meant about this.
Uh-oh.
I haven't looked at it yet, had it. I just wanna make sure that we have sufficient funds to pay all the bills.
We are, right now, we're looking good.
If you don't want, the excess and deficiencies that rated, and there's not much left there.
Rated, and utilized.
Well, it's rated, it's gone.
Okay, moving along. We have public comment, and we actually have public who wants to make a comment. Paul Newlin?
Yes, hi. I'm here as a private Whately resident. I'm also on the select board, so some of what I'll say may reflect the select board, and some may not. So I'm not speaking on behalf of the select board. We haven't discussed an issue that's before saw, and has been before saw, but I felt a personal need to let you know my feelings, and for what that's worth. We have bought a building in Whately, and it is presently only partially occupied. Our intention was always to have it housed as South County EMS system, but this is taking a very long time, and we're sitting there with an unoccupied space, and it's my understanding that the school board is looking for a new home for the superintendent's office. And I know we have discussed this, and there is some interest among many people in Whately to have that building occupied as soon as possible. Right now, we're not making any rent on the space. We bought that building on the understanding that Skims would occupy it. We bought it in good faith and in trust, and now we've just seen an RFP that implies the RFP is issued by the town of Deerfield to find a home for Skims in Deerfield, it seems, from the language of the RFP. Now, maybe I'm misinterpreting that, but that signals to us that we're not gonna have any occupants in there for an indefinite future. And personally, I would like to see an occupant in there as soon as possible, and it's my personal feeling that the superintendent's office might make a very suitable occupant. I'm not saying that that's how I would vote on it, but that's how I feel personally right now. I'm very frustrated with this entire procedure, and I know that other people, I can say this with very high confidence, other people are also very frustrated with the time that this is taking, and we're concerned. We're concerned about Whately's finances, we're concerned about the use of the building, and we wanna get on with things. So I just wanted, I heard you were having, just this morning, I was told you're having a meeting, and I thought it would be a good thing to come here and let you know at least how I feel. And I don't think I'm alone feeling this, but I can't say anything other than this is my feeling right now, from what I know. And we'll be meeting together with you all on May 31st to discuss possible future events. So I thank you for your attention, and I put that out there for what it's worth.
Well, thank you for coming in and speaking like that. I know Marty has been dealing a lot with this issue, and I think we're going to be getting a lot deeper into it.
To piggyback on Paul's, you know, I'm one of the people that's been staying, I'm trying to stay on top of this since January, when we showed interest, the school showed interest, and next you know, Deerfield had a petition, and we had to wait for, you know, their town meeting to find out what was gonna go on, and next you know, it got delayed again, and it just seems like that was almost a waste of three and a half months that we could, us being, you know, the superintendent's office, could've been doing something. So, you know, I've been, me and Marty have talked many times about this, and, you know...
Well, I worked hard and in good faith to get Skims a house, and represented that to Whately residents, and they voted to get the building with that understanding. And now I'm feeling like, you know, I hope that was the right thing to do. I did it in good faith and conscience, and now I'm looking out for our interests by pursuing whatever other options are available to us. Because personally, I like the idea of Skims over there in Whately, from a selfish point of view, from my own, you know, point of view, and I think it's, according to the Board of Oversight, it's the best place for it, and that's what we've heard repeatedly, yet it's still not occupied. So I'm concerned about that also, so, so there. Thanks, Ma.
Thanks for coming in. Anybody else have a comment or a question? Okay. Moving along. Student, report student advisory?
Yes, see, I'm supposed to be here, I don't know if she runs late, well, we're...
All right. Okay, we have unfinished business in the form of central office updates.
Yeah, so I have a couple of things tonight to give you, and I've invited Bob Lettsco to come, and I passed out some costs for you, and we'll get to that in a minute. But here's what I would like to recommend to you folks, because as Paul said, this has been dragging on forever. I feel like I come and report information to you every month, and then I go and gather more information, and nothing is happening, and we're running out of time. So I would propose that regardless of what you do, that we form a little committee, I will dedicate myself to the next two months to work with a small committee, to determine with your input what option that we pursue next. I see it as three options. Pursue the Whately building, and give permission for me and the committee, I've already made an appointment to meet with the Whately select board on May 31st, it's their next meeting, to give them a proposal, and they would honor the same monetary deal that they were gonna honor with Skims, which is about $1,000 a month in rent. They would foot the bill for the renovations initially, because it's improvements to their building, and then tie that into a monthly amount. I've talked with Patty, the money that we would be saving from electricity and heating would certainly cover that rental. So pursue that, that's one. Two, I also forwarded to you the reports from the Department of Public Health. Hopefully you had a chance to read those. Again, it's showing that it's not a dangerous building, but it's showing that there are some things that we should do to make it more comfortable for the people who occupy it. So Bob has some of those cost recommendations. The problem with that, as you all know, if any of you own an older home or a business, once you start opening things up, people find things, and then you have to bring things up to code. So even though their initial renovations, or things that we have to address, don't seem so insurmountable, my fear that they're gonna come in and say, okay, now you need to make it handicapped accessible, and your electricity, and et cetera, et cetera. And if you weren't agreeable to do that, to have this committee ascertain the needs and the actual amount of space for the people who work in central office, and then sit with Darius and see if we couldn't make a plan for housing people at Frontier. Personally, ideally, Whately town offices makes total sense. As a Deerfield resident, I think it is a perfect location for Skims. However, when I met with the town administrator yesterday, the RFP has gone through five revisions. It is not entirely finished yet. Once it is finished, they then have 120 days, Whately does, or anybody does, in order to respond. So that means that Whately is without any tenants until September 1st. That is not a good time for a school system to move into new facilities. I will also tell you that the town of Whately just lost a major tax revenue source recently, because a company is either moving out of town or filing some sort of legal standard, but it's about a $200,000 tax decrease in revenues. So they are not wanting to have an empty property either. So I think this may be a pretty good time to enter into some sort of more formal conversation with them. So that's what I'm proposing. Three options, form a committee to work with me. I've completed the contracts, the policies, the budgets, so all of my big things are done. So now I'm doing a lot of housework, and I really want to put this issue to bed. So I asked Bob to take a look at the Department of Public Health report, and to come up with some costs associated with those, and that's what he's done. And then we met again, because in order to do this, as we talked about, the basement with all of the mountain of records, Patty and I have met with a company to digitize the records. And obviously, there's a cost to that, because if you're gonna have to clean out the basement to tear out the carpet and pull the records, you may as well not put those records back if you're gonna be there. And I think the only way to go is to digitize these, otherwise you're gonna just be dealing with this problem for five years down the road. So I guess I'm gonna throw it over to you, Bob, if you wanna just talk about some, how you broke these costs down.
What I tried to do is, when Mike Feeney from the PPH came out and looked at the building, he met with us, he toured the building, interviewed all of the occupants there, and he came up with a list of things that he saw as possibly being issues, and he summarized them at the end of his report, numbered from 1 through 13, or something like that, and suggested they were things that we could do to improve the situation in the building.
Were you there? Were you there when he was there?
Oh, yeah.
When they were there?
Yes, I was.
So...
Phil, do you have a question?
Yeah, well...
You seem really excited.
No, no, no. Why were only seven of the 15 employees interviewed?
People didn't have to be interviewed, and some chose not to be. They had two nurses epidemiologists there who also took personal information from people, and some people chose not to share them.
I didn't happen to be there that day.
Patty was out that day, but most other people were there. And you have to know, Phil, in section of the building that's not over the furnaces, which is where most of, where all the bookkeepers are, that they are not seemingly affected, or shared some of the concerns that people on the other side of the building have. So... Bob?
So basically, at the end of his report, he summarized a bunch of things that he thought would help in the building. And some of them are relatively straightforward, you know? He suggested that we get a look inside of the, not the furnace that's actually functioning there now, but the old one that's abandoned in place, and make sure there isn't any path for combustion gases to be leaving that, going from the newer furnace, which is not really new, but the furnace is working, into the old one. So that, you know, that'll take some digging in there, we'll have to get somebody to actually climb inside of there and take a look at it, but that's relatively straightforward. He suggested we add some CO detectors. I put two in the offices immediately after he left. They're not exactly the kind that I'd like to see in there, so I put an allowance in the report to buy some that actually have a digital readout that we can watch in the building. He suggested that we install or repair and install bird screens on all the old vents leaving the building. That is complicated by the fact we really gotta get somebody with a lift in there up to do it. But that, you know, most of those things are small projects. There have been reports of birds being in the old ventilation ducts, and that was a major concern to him because of issues with bird dropping.
I think they're backing up what you're saying.
Well, they're there all day for me, in the springtime.
It's nice background music when you meet Marty, you hear chirping.
Lovely, delightful little bird chirps, as I give you that news.
She's got one of those clocks that jerk on the hour.
The screens are relatively simple, the cleaning of the ducts is more complicated. And I called a few places and got what I think is a reasonable number for that. And then if you go down in the basement where the bulk of the older files are, they're in two rooms that are carpeted, and they were probably carpeted 50 years ago, and there's no way to get in there and clean them on a regular basis. So really, what we need to do there, if we're gonna deal with those carpets, is take all the files out of there, rip up the carpets, probably the cheapest thing to do is seal the floor with epoxy or something like that, and then put everything back in there. I put in a chunk of money for a new vacuum with a special filter that will ensure that when we're doing cleaning there, routine cleaning, it's not moving stuff around. Because of the, some of the complexities with all of these numbers above, I stuck a contingency in there, so if we decided to do them, I was sure they could get done. There's another number in here that I wanted to make sure I mentioned. Oh, yeah, the remedial cleaning, you know, that's, you know, no matter what we do in the basement there, we are going to end up moving those files around, and if we move the files around, they're all covered with dust and soot and junk from years of sitting down there. And what I wanna do is get a contractor in there that'll set up negative air and clean everything, so that we're not making a mess. And even if we send somebody in there to do digital records conversion, they're not gonna go in there until we clean it up to begin with. So that's something that just has to be... And, you know, they made some suggestions that really aren't gonna cost us anything, you know? They suggested that we remove some of the plants, and I looked, because we discussed it earlier today, I looked to see exactly why, and they said it's just because occupants of a building, some people are sensitive to pollen and mold, so having a lot of plants in the building could be part of what people are complaining about. And they also suggested that we make drinking water available, which you do, so there's really no issue there. So I kinda subtotaled everything at that point, and to me, if we're gonna stay there any amount of time, that's kinda the bare minimum stuff. But there's also three things that he suggested in his report that are not inexpensive and, you know, could have a lot of difficulties associated with them. One of the things that he observed and got from interviewing people is we have issues during dry period with a lot of dirt from the fields around that building blowing into the building. And his observation was that can have pollens in it, molds in it, and fertilizers and insecticides that the farmers are using. So he suggested that we fence around the building with a chain link fence and wind barrier, which is complicated for lots of reasons, but, you know...
Mainly because we don't own the land, so that's probably one of them. Yeah, that's one complication.
You know, I just kinda walked around the building and figured that the two exposures to the west and to the north, where most of that's coming from, and that's about 460 feet, and if we fence that off with that kinda fencing, there's a number that we would have to spend. He also talks about ventilation in the building. There is no, the only ventilation in the building is the window. If you open a window, you get some ventilation.
You also get the dust.
That's right. So, you know, adding mechanical ventilation to that building is complicated. We would have to put an air handling unit in the attic and add some to the duct port that's already there, and because he said, you know, the way he talked about the ventilation, he didn't say it was a have-to-be, he said it was kind of, it was something that may help. So I carry that number a little lower. And he also talked a lot about meticulously cleaning the building. We've got a part-time person in there that works a few hours a week, and, you know, we clean the building, but we don't meticulously clean the building. So I put an allowance in there for essentially a half-time custodian. And then, so, you know, there's that chunk of money related to the DPH review, but I also wanna keep bringing up that doing that does not in any way solve or help a whole bunch of other issues in that building. I mean, we don't know if next week, next month, or next year, the furnace there is gonna quit. That's a very old furnace, and I've maintained all along that just replacing it in place with a similar furnace is not the solution. We really need to do something to the distribution system, so that's an expense. And if we, if we do something with the boiler, we have to do something with the asbestos that's on the boiler, and the piping in the building. The building doesn't have a fire alarm system. There's issues with emergency egress and getting in and out of that building at different locations. The building is not accessible, and you walk into the building in the middle between two levels. So really, if you were gonna make that building accessible, you'd have to do it with either a two-step lift or a two-step elevator, which would be hugely expensive. And there's electrical and plumbing issues there, and the office space does not work well for the occupants. Breaking that up and putting partitions or something in there would make it a lot better. And there's issues, you know, I put a small amount of money in here for issues with the envelope, and that goes all the way from the fact that dirt and dust blows in the building when the wind is blowing, but also in the winter, if you walk around that building and feel around the edges of the building, and the windows and the radiator, there's tons of cold air. There's just work that needs to be done. So I'm not making any recommendations here, I'm just trying to quantify what I see as some of the issues in this building.
Your $10,400 figure for the custodian, is that, that's over 20 hours a week, so we're gonna have to pay fringe benefits on that if we, if we have an employee, so that costs me very well double.
I'm, and I'm not saying we should hire a custodian, I'm just saying if we follow those regulations and meticulously clean the building, that's what it would take.
Oh, I just pointed out.
Yeah, and that is, and actually, the $10,000 was, I was figuring 10 hours and adding the hours that people are already working, but you're right, there's other costs associated with that.
Marty? What I'd like you to do, I think the board ought to authorize you to negotiate, to form your subcommittee, negotiate a memorandum, an intermunicipal memorandum of agreement, and try to bring it to the board in June for action. And you pretty much know what the costs are, and we just, but we need to, if we, it should come now and get it over with, because I think if you go to try to consolidate the existing classroom space we have right now, it's gonna be very disruptive, especially if you're gonna try to do it by September 1st.
You're talking about everyone here?
Yeah.
I'm not recommending there, but I...
No, but I'm saying that's...
There's no other option.
Correct.
The other two aren't valid.
Yeah, and I don't think that would work, but I think we ought to negotiate the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Whately, and bring it to the board for action in June. We don't have to go to bidding, it's a negotiation between, you don't have to do an RFP, I don't think.
No, you don't.
And I think we just need to move it forward, and if it's $1,000 a month, and...
Well, I'll back up. It was the same rate that they negotiated with Skims, which is about $1,000, I think.
And that will give us sufficient square footage. You're correct?
It's 3,000 square feet, from what I understand.
Yeah, and it's more square footage than we have today, and I think it would probably work. And the figure that, if my understanding is correct, utilities are included in those numbers. There may be some additional costs based upon whatever renovations we want to do.
There will be. There will be.
And I don't know whether or not we're gonna have to buy some lighters between the various workstations.
We will. Right now, it's an open space.
Yeah.
They've contracted with a outside group that comes in and does modular.
Yeah.
And they're soundproof. All the electronics are built into the walls.
Yeah.
And they've already, the town of Whately already voted during their town meeting to set aside money to do that renovation. We would ask them to wrap our costs in with that and then parcel it out so that we wouldn't have to come up with an additional, you know, large sum of money. I know we have some money still in our central office building fund.
Looking at it right now.
$58,000.
Well, I'm not sure. Let's find out what the actual amount is.
I would just, Bob, if you're gonna do that, that should be on the record. I'm not in agreement with that at all. Just, I mean, I don't know how other people feel about that.
What should be on the record?
What's not on the record, I'm saying?
That should be a motion and whatever, just...
Oh, to do what he's saying?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're not gonna do that yet.
No, no, I think we need...
I'm just letting him talk.
I think we need to vote to do this. We don't have to vote it tonight. She can bring the whole package back to us.
I think it's a good idea.
The first meeting in June. And we can either go yes or no. I'm just saying we need to go forward.
Well, if the committee desires, so I would like to have some sort of affirmation. I don't wanna sit before the select board with my committee greatly and say, "I have no idea if the school committee is gonna support this." I don't wanna waste their time. So if you're not in favor of it and you want me to pursue, or the committee wants to pursue something else, that's fine. I'm needing some sort of direction from you all tonight.
Do you have any idea what it would cost us to move it?
I have no idea. That's why I'm hoping to have a committee.
Make it six figures.
The contract rate for Siderly to move per hour is $248.
Okay.
And it takes about four hours to move four people from one side of the mess to the other. I just did it. That's the only thing I know. It's expensive, and that's a contract rate. We'd probably pay more. Because that's...
Well, I'm just looking at the cost of moving as opposed to $154,800, which I consider lost money.
Yep.
All these things that Bob was talking about.
He's just throwing it in.
That's lost money. That's like putting $10,000 into a $57,000 building.
The president didn't have any miles, though, thank you.
Or moving the deck chairs on the Titanic, right?
So Marty, we do have $40,000, just under $40,000 in your account, that I just checked.
What kind of a committee would you like with you?
I would like two or three people. I would love to have some representatives from Whately and some representatives from Deerfield because I think these are two towns that have a vested interest. And I'm not excluding Sunday.
I was gonna say, I gotta shut out.
Now, thinking, Tom is like, like going to the hills.
But I think two or three people who would have some time to devote in the next six weeks, because I'm looking at this as a six-week project.
I don't really understand your design. I mean, the...
I'm trying to clean it up before I leave, though.
Right, I get that.
Okay.
But the report indicates that there is no objective quantifiable health concerns with the building.
Correct.
That what we're talking about is alleviating hay fever.
No.
No, what we're talking about is no accessibility, no fire alarm, no egress, no heat.
Cleaning up bird eggs.
I'm running out of fingers.
And it's more than hay fever.
We're grandfathered.
And a chain on one of the exits.
No, we are grandfathered, but this opportunity is not...
Do you have an employee in the wheelchair? You're grandfathered?
No. We're not gonna, this opportunity is not gonna present itself.
Do you have an employee who has to slide on her butt down the stairs to get to the toilet?
We just had that happen with someone who had foot surgery.
And we have, if we have to put an elevator in at some point, it may get stuck. And I still have employees who are not able to work there.
Louise Law hasn't worked there.
Well, I wasn't gonna say. But there are, yeah. But there are some people who have not been able to work there, and they now have to work in other facilities.
And it is more than hay fever. You've got some people in there, myself included, who have chronic asthma. And it's much more, we've got people who already have chronic rations. It's not hay fever. Hay fever is seasonal. This is year-long.
And that's why I said, it's not that it's a dangerous building, but it is very unpleasant for numbers of people. But your things that are coming to a head, Phil, are all of those records down there. Those records have to be digitized. Nobody has ever addressed that. And we have to do that. And if we have to pull them out in order to be digitized, then let's get rid of the carpet. And if you can get rid of the carpet, you know, I mean, that's why the list goes on and on and on. And Bob's point is, we can do all of this. We can spend $65,000 and get rid of the carpet and pull the records out and clean the place up and get some CO2 monitors and have the birds blocked from being in my chimney every day. And the furnace could still go out tomorrow, and you still have to pay another $80,000 and everything else on top. And so it gets to a point of how long does this committee, you own the building, how long do you want to keep addressing this?
But is it fair to, I'm sorry. Is it fair to ask us to address? We certainly talked about it back then, and I'm not disagreeing with any of your points. But it's five weeks between now and the next meeting that you want us to, or you're proposing that we make a decision. And I don't know that that's necessarily enough time. It's certainly a lot of time to gather a lot of information, form a committee, have a lot of conversations about all the different options and what's down the pipe. But five weeks to, like, pick the whole thing up and move it?
You wouldn't do that, what I'm asking.
No, but like, to make the decision, to spend the money. And I think that's...
Is this the first time you've heard about this, Judy, tonight?
No, 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 I heard about it two evenings ago. I heard it. I listened to all the things. I taught, we talked about the DPH study. Like, I get, I've been reading it. I'm hearing what they're saying. I've been in horrible buildings. I know, I've seen the physical effects it has on the people that I've worked with. So I understand the environmental conditions and the quality of life issues that we're asking these people to deal with every day when they come into work. It's not fair. But what I am saying is that, and I understand that Whately is right there, ready to roll. But it's bigger than just picking up and moving into Whately. And I wanna make sure that we have enough time. Maybe five weeks is enough time, but I wanna make sure we have enough time to properly address the short and the long-term impact of making this decision. That's all. I'm not opposed to people having a safe and healthy work environment. I am, but I don't wanna feel pressured to, like, do it just because Marty's leaving in June and, you know, the new superintendent is coming and, you know. I understand you're trying to wrap things up. I want you to wrap things, that's a good note to go out on. But I just wanna feel like I have a little space to think about it.
But Judy, I think what we're saying is if our furnace dies tomorrow, and it could, even though we're not in heating season, we're out of there anyway. And you've gotta find someplace for us to go.
That's fine, but if that were the case, it would be faster. You'd have to spread into the different buildings that were available. You wouldn't necessarily be hopping into Whately because it wouldn't be available day one. You'd have to find a short-term solution and a long-term solution.
But what we're saying is instead of, we're trying to be proactive and not reactive. And we're, I think we're all at the point where we are saying, "This building is no longer feasible to house." And we've got the perfect opportunity. Because if Whately doesn't take us, they're gonna find another tenant. Because that's what Mr. Newland told us tonight. They bought that building with the intent of having a tenant. And if not us, and if not SCAMS, it will be somebody else. And then we'll have no place to go because we've already done a preliminary survey of what is available for office space in the four-town area. And there isn't much. And that would be at the retail price of renting per square foot. It wouldn't be the deal that Whately is offering us. And it would cost us a lot more money.
And I'm not asking to enter into an agreement with Whately before the next school committee meeting. All I'm asking is support for a committee to approach it. They may say, "You know what? We're gonna stick with SCAMS, sorry." Because they have some very strong feelings about that. Paul, I know, is one of three members on that committee. I know one member feels as strongly against what he said. So that is not a done deal. But I don't want us to lose that opportunity and not at least enter into a conversation with them. That's all I'm asking for. And I would bring back that information to the June meeting and say, "This is what they're proposing. This is what the cost will be." The committee and I would gather information from the modular place and said, "This is the cost of doing a modular, if you were to do that. This is the cost of moving. This is the cost," you know. And you'd have all of that. And then you could vote as a committee, "Yes, that's what we'd like to do." And it will happen over the summer or before school starts. Or, "No, we don't wanna do that."
We may need a special medium, Judy.
So, actually, this is like one of the issues that I think people in this building, for some reason, are really consor... This is the one issue that people within this building, I get stopped and opinions freely volunteer on. And I wanna tell you that I've been repeatedly told that there is a belief that there is plenty of room in this building for the superintendent's office to comfortably relocate. And those exact words were used.
By faculty?
Yes. And I would like if you could, like, address exactly how much room is and how short you are from being able to house people in this building. How short...
It's almost like you gotta take over a wig, don't you? I mean, if you're...
Basically, you'd have to take, I mean, we, you know, I've gone over preliminary stuff, you know. Is, I mean, the question, is there room? I mean, we can make room. You know what I mean? There's, you know, in the sense that teachers don't have to have prep periods in their room. You know what I mean, those kind of things. You can juggle things around. You would be taking office space and putting it into what is conventional classrooms. Some of the things that, in the way the current breakdown of the building is and where I put them, there isn't really adequate adult facilities. They'd have to share student facilities or walk a long distance. We'd have to have, you know, there would be some cost to put in new security because it'd be a different entrance. Because you don't want the public entering the main school office entrance and walking through the whole building in order to have a meeting with so-and-so because it's too much access to a building. In order to use the rooms that I foresee to kinda keep it in one area and then have additional offices so that you can have private rooms for the superintendent, the business manager, and the sped director of special education, they all need their own offices because the amount of meetings they have that need to be private. We're really shifting around. Is it possible? Yes, but they're not, it's open space. You're in the middle of a school. Kids are passing in between periods. You know, that kind of thing. And so, like I said, it's possible. And one of your suggestions, Marty, is to have a meeting to meet with me to, I'll pull up the school map and I'll show you what, I mean, there's, you know, you asked me to look at that, and I kinda went through and I drew some stuff up. The problem is that there's no place where they can be, lack of a better term, quarantined from the rest of the building. There really isn't, in the sense of they'd have to have access to, there won't, there wouldn't be any break rooms with running water. There wouldn't be, again, staff bathrooms because the way the staff bathrooms are in the old part of the building, the new part of the building, there's...
Are you suggesting that there are query problems with some of these superintendent staff?
No, visitors.
There are people coming in all the time from the public for different business that they need to conduct. So that was one of the other things. I had three suggestions tonight. A, to form the committee. Have the committee look, need to serious, look at space allocations here. Have the committee look at the needs of the central office to come up with a scenario if we were to move, if we were to move to Whately. Or C, to make a recommendation to start some of the work in central office. So that's where we are. I'm just looking for, committee to be formed.
I would just like to say, if that area is also not climate-controlled, we deal with a lot of technology and the heat is...
There is no AC in any of the rooms I'm offering.
That's not gonna work.
In any of them, there's none, on the way you say.
I think this list of stuff here, for the most part, is money poorly spent if we spend that money.
Agreed.
And, you know, I think we need to move forward. And...
I have a question for you, Bob. Not you, Bob, you and Bob.
Okay.
Too many Bobs. On number seven, that add mechanical ventilation, that would be in the attic?
Probably, yes.
So would, is the attic strong enough to support that? Or is that something where now we're looking at additional construction? And do you see what I'm saying? Like, things go along?
Yeah, my simple answer to that is probably, but it's something that we would check. But I don't, I don't, I don't see that as, I don't see that as a big issue.
I'd love to see that.
Well, I've got a minute.
I know. I just can't imagine I'm gonna get into it.
It's getting up there terribly for access. I do wanna say that, you know, we should somehow acknowledge what the state did for it. You know, Michael Feeney and his crew came in and they spent a lot of time, and they did a really good job. And they, you know, they did it for us at no cost. And they're good, practical people. And, you know, whether for our reasons or not, we choose to do what they suggest, we should at least acknowledge the fact that they put real effort into it. They did it for us.
Oh, yeah.
They were great people to work with.
They were very, and acknowledge Phil for being our...
I'm not critical of their report at all.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just saying that I think we're, if we spend a half million dollars to do all these things, that it's not cost-effective and it's not law-abiding.
Bob had to...
You know, whoever is thinking that, whether it's good or bad, if you haven't been to the central office and you haven't gone down cellar, make an appointment, go see Rhonda. Rhonda will take you downstairs in that basement. I've been down there many times. And just walking down there stirs the mold up. So if you haven't gone there, go make a visit before you make your determination, maybe next month.
Then.
That you called it a cellar, I think, is the absolute reason we shouldn't be there. It's a cellar. It's not a place for files. A place for files is in a computer. It's not in boxes. It's not piled on top of filing cabinets. It's not in the cellar. They need to be organized. The people need to be out of a place that's gross. This is one of those, like, this is one of those Staples commercials. It's easy. Sometimes the easiest solution really is the best solution. There's a place. We need a new place. So let's pick up all of our dusty, gross, nasty stuff, clean it all up, digitalize it, and move it to the nice, clean place. That's reasonable. We can move it here, but that's not easy. It would be obnoxious. It would be complicated. It would be costly. Their idea, the Whately idea, it makes sense. And it's easy. And we don't have to talk about it ever again. I don't wanna have this conversation a year ago. I didn't want it, or a year from now, I didn't want it a year ago. I don't want it now. Let's just take care of this and move on. She's not asking us to reconstruct DNA. She's just asking us for permission to enter into a conversation. I think a conversation would be great. Let's move it along, get this done, and we never have to talk about it again.
Can you explain that a little more thoroughly?
What? What?
Much more for the record.
Well, I, we have a question. So either whatever option we choose, there's some kind of a cost with the records. We have to do something with the records. Correct. And the minute you start touching them, everything starts happening with the carpet, with the... Oh, yeah.
Our initial quote is $95,000. Now, that's a scary number.
Yeah.
However, it can be done in stages. And then... They were pretty overwhelmed coming into our basement as well, looking at everything, so...
And these are people who do this for a living and they were--
They were like Paul at our situation.
Can any of them be destroyed? Can we digitize them? They're all going to be destroyed.
No, I mean-- Yes. We can go through them ahead of time. A, to cut down the costs.
Certain number of years.
But they did that last year. They went through-- Correct me if I'm wrong-- Three or four tons they had shredded last year.
Right. But there are some things, you know, we--
You gotta keep something for under record.
So you need people on a committee?
We need-- I really would like a committee.
I would really love a motion.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any more beat this to death discussion?
No, I'm gonna turn mold.
Damien, you wanna chime in?
No, I'm just really just trying to soak it all in.
Welcome to our group. Okay, so I have a motion and a second and no further discussion. So all those in favor of letting Marty form her committee? And I believe on that, I would just like to let you choose your own committee or ask--
No, I would like to-- I'm serious. I would like people who have some time. If this is a really busy time for you, then please, I don't want to-- It doesn't have to be just Watley or Deerfield, but I thought both towns had a vested interest. But if somebody has the time--
Okay, so let's vote the motion first and then we can go on to that. So all those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, so now forming the committees. Anyone feel strongly about being on the committee? Bob?
Yeah.
Bob? Phil, Bob and Bob. Oh, boy.
Can you all play nice, boys?
Phil, can you have an open mind? Phil has a very open mind, actually. Sometimes two.
Not a true person. Thank you all. Okay, I will be in touch with Bob, Bob, and Phil.
Okay, so now that we're done with that-- Moving on to new business, discussing and voting on policy sections D through J.
Thank you, Mr. Lettsco. That, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
We will ask that, Bob, to also join the team tonight.
Did I mention that we were at a town meeting last night? We were at a town meeting. How'd you do? For a long time.
Okay, so policies. I am going to suggest to this committee that you do what the other committees do. I originally brought to each committee meeting, this is one copy of policies D through J, and I had a copy for everybody. And I had to ask somebody to carry the box for me and somebody to carry the box home because nobody took one. So I'm just bringing one sample tonight. I would ask that you would honor the work of the policy subcommittee and approve policies D through J.
And we're all done with policies, yeah?
Policies are done. The book is done. It's rewritten, so--
They did a nice job.
They did. And it will be online this summer. So it will be good to go for you all in September and--
Congrats for spending that much time with Patsy to everybody that did.
People did a really good job. So do we have a motion?
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
So for clarification, so that's now actively the new policy that handbook I'm running off of? Or is it starting next year?
May through J, starting for next year.
I mean, once they voted, isn't it affected immediately?
I think it is immediate. But you still have two more that I have to bring to you in June. Two more sections.
I got it. But so I just-- I'm just asking so I can get a copy if I now run out a new policy.
Pass that to Mr. Lettsco.
So she doesn't have to carry--
Since I looked at my policy handbook today. Oh, my God, it's heavy.
Would you like an effective date in the minutes for that?
Well, I still have Sunderland to approve it. So this is not the last committee meeting.
But if you-- Once you guys approve it, it's good for me. It doesn't matter what Sunderland says.
That's right, yes.
Effective July one.
You can have it effective July one.
So all new policies are effective July one at least? So that'll make my life easier because then I have to read through it to make sure that we're following--
July one. All right, so that was just added to the motion, Bob.
Because you know about the very page, right?
Sometimes-- It was already in the motion.
Okay, it was in the motion, that's right. I just added it to--
Unless anyone's--
Okay.
Nine minutes left.
Marty, would you pass that back?
Do you want to deal with strikes?
Madam, John?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Question. These are pay raises. We're in the process of collective bargaining with our organized people.
Oh, yeah, we are. We're finished.
But it hasn't been reported to the board yet.
Correct.
And it hasn't been-- Has it conquered with the employees? Been ratified by the employees?
That part I don't know.
No.
So I would hold on--
We're not voting tonight. We're just bringing them to you. We vote in June.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Just remember that I believe a year or two ago, I believe it was people from this committee wanted-- Didn't want to have to vote on the same night that they saw these. So we brought them to you in May so that we can vote in June.
Well, that's a good idea. And we should act on the ones that are collectively bargaining before we get to these.
Right, so we're not--
It only took me forty years to get it, but I got it.
He was the one that asked.
There you go. So bring them back. We'll talk about them in June, okay?
Stipends for school committee members. Before we even get into this discussion, because we are heading towards hopefully moving the superintendent's office and because I have looked through that paperwork and it's-- I'm really not in favor of this, I would like to table that and just move along. Anybody else have any--
What I would like to talk about--
Stipends for school committee members.
I would like to talk about it, but I'd like to talk about it with the idea of it not starting until July of seventeen. And not starting soon, but in July of seventeen.
Okay, but before we talk about--
And then we can put money in the budget and we can be upfront about it and everything else. And we don't have to act on it tonight or not. The Town of Deerfield's town meeting decided they were gonna pay the chairman of the board of selectmen six thousand and the other board members five thousand dollars.
Okay, but before we talk about it, I would like to take a straw vote and see if you are in favor of paying the school committee stipends. Phil?
Could I just--
Yes, no.
I--
I just want to know if we should go further on in discussion.
We don't have the authority to make that decision.
Yes, we do.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
Not by ourselves.
Yes. The regional school committee sets it.
Can I-- May I approach the chair briefly?
Should we pay Phil?
Our attorney is here.
We did ask our attorney.
It's right here.
You want to say, Phil, can you give some--
What it says is that town meeting and the majority of town meeting would have to approve. We're a regional school committee. Majority of town meeting-- A majority of towns would have to approve the school committee compensation theory, which should be enough to table this and move on.
Could we--
May I have a question?
Our attorney said, A, he had to check to see if it was in the regional agreement. And I said, no. There is nothing about school committee members receiving pay in the regional agreement. And he felt that it would also have to go before the town meeting.
Where is this-- Obviously, this discussion has taken place somewhere before because he had time to do this and I know nothing about this until I sat down in his chair.
It was in a packet.
It was in your packet.
Yeah, but that's the first time?
Right.
Yeah.
No, I kind of sued Cindy about--
Bob had emailed me and asked me to put it on the agenda. He'd emailed me and Donna and asked that it go on the agenda. So then I emailed Donna and said, I think we should put this on the agenda because a member has asked.
Donna then approached me and I met with our attorney and I said, this is coming forward because we just had the Deerfield School Committee-- or Deerfield Town Meeting. And at the Deerfield Town Meeting, by a very close margin, they voted substantial increases for the select board. And that's where the conversation came from. So then I asked the attorney. He asked if it was in the regional agreement. I said, no. And he said it would have to go before town meeting. Then I asked Donna to do a search on her list serve of the communities that do pay stipends. And that's what you have here. As you can see--
Pardon?
I haven't seen-- Most of them are in the eastern part of the state. I couldn't find anybody other than the Long Meadow that had it. But regardless, it's not gonna happen soon. So if it's something you wish to talk about, you would have to get it before town meeting, which would be for next year. And then you'd have to put it into the budget for the following year. So you're talking about two years out.
That's my point.
Right.
I wanted to set it out.
This would have been the year that we could have cast some checks. I mean, we were busy this year.
So anyway, that's the history behind it and why it's on the agenda.
So can we refer to the budget subcommittee to look at when they're putting budget together for next year?
Well, you have to-- You can't do that until you get town meeting approval.
We can't-- We tend to get town meeting--
And you have to get the regional agreement amended.
Well, it doesn't make a lot of difference to me.
Don't we have to decide to vote to ask for all this?
Do you even want to discuss it?
I think I made myself--
Yeah, I want to recognize it. Yeah.
I-- If it came to we were getting paid, I would be donating my money back. That's just me. Do what you want. But I think it's a very long process for a very little bit of money that takes-- I don't know that it would even-- It might matter to some people, but I'd hate to think you ran for this position for a thousand dollars. Yeah.
Well, there's no--
Minimum of ten meetings. Would you have--
I just got a watch in and I did not do this for the money.
You did not do it for the money.
I didn't even think it was gonna be--
Did you know upfront it wasn't gonna be paid?
Yes, I did know it was gonna be--
Six thousand dollars.
On the other hand, we could get school committee sponsored by Berkshire Brew Company and pay us in beer.
Collecting another check.
Is there any further discussion on this? Yeah, I was gonna take my straw. Well, you didn't ask this answer yet, so no.
You utterly convinced me. I'm whatever way you--
You're a no.
Yeah, yeah.
Two?
You asking me?
I am.
Hey, I--
Yes or no, Bob?
I wanted to do it as of next year because my term is up next man.
So that's a no. I'm an O.
What's the question?
Do you want to pursue this further about getting stipends for school committee members? Do you want to just leave them and move on?
I haven't had one for forty years.
Why is there now? Mary?
No.
And-- Okay, we're done. Move on.
Just, you know, just to let you know, in the Town of Watley, I'm not sure about the other three towns. Town of Watley, the elementary does get a stipend of, I think it's three hundred and fifty-six dollars this year. So I'm not sure about the other elementary and any other other towns. I know what we do here. Here, you're at the elementary up here.
It's a hundred and a hundred and fifty. But if I do that, I can't figure out my resume as volunteer. Moving along. Okay, we are gonna be out of here right here. So everybody just come out. It's been an-- Okay, we're on the reports. The collaborative?
Uh, yeah, we had an update from SPIFI, the Strategic Planning Initiative for Families and Youth. Just kind of giving them-- Giving us an update on what they've been doing, surveying eighth, tenth, and eleventh graders about substance abuse, bullying, other at-risk behaviors. They talked about the trainings that they've been hosting on adolescent brain development and addiction, school climate prevention curriculum, that sort of thing. We discussed-- The collaborative discussed areas of growth this year. Advocacy with small rural districts, early childhood ad, new professional development offerings, social justice and equity, conversation that they've been having, and a lot of professional development about that. Discussed some pay scales. And they wanted everyone, teachers, to look for summer professional development offerings. All online, so check it out for good summer fun.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to report? All it takes is an article that was listed in Telegram.
Only that we had a copy of it. And it was more the same conversation that we had had the month before about, you know, there are more small community meetings going on and trying to support those efforts. Meeting with superintendents, writing collective letters.
Any questions? Thank you, Lynn. Um, principal?
So we've had quite a-- Quite a lot happen since we didn't really have a meeting in May-- I mean, April, rather, and talk about what's going on in the school. But kind of just an overview. I know I'm missing some of the things in the past two months, but we are in the middle of MCAS season. Middle School Science is gonna be administered this week. Administered this week. Both middle school and high school MCAS is next week. And then we have high school science in the first week of June. We had a successful music telethon on April fourteenth. And the event raised over seven thousand dollars, which is the highest for the telethon so far in its history. And so I want to thank the music department and all the community that supported to make the telethon a success. Number three, I'm actually-- I wrote it was wrong here. The spring concerts are this Tuesday and Thursday. However, the chorus in Strings is tonight and Wind is on Thursday. I was going off of what they did last year and I was corrected. So in fact, if we can get it here soon enough, maybe we'll catch a little bit of it. And I also wanted to recognize that the students just finished up their production, their Fred production, which is a student organized play and production that they--
Which is fabulous. Which is fabulous. Every year, people should go.
Very good.
Sorry.
We have just completed the AP exams. Just let you know, it's kind of a big-- For our school in the sense that we have over one hundred students taking one hundred and twenty-five exams. And so if you can kind of do the math in your head, if we have approximately-- We have under a hundred students in both the junior and senior class. That's quite a few students taking AP classes out of the eight subjects we offer. And then we have three who are taking online AP classes. Just to let you know, I'm really busy. I'm in the middle of the hiring replacements for the staff who are retiring or leaving at the end of the school year. And you can kind of read through, but we have hired the replacements for our middle school social studies teacher, guidance counselor, health teacher, high school special education-- For our high school special education and science teacher. We're currently in the process of filling our psychology position and our high school science teacher position and our middle school special education position. And I'll announce all of them at once in probably September. I might be able to have them done by June, but we'll see where we're at. You should have all received an invitation to graduation on Friday, June third. You should have all received the invitation to graduation on Friday, June third, and so hope you can attend. And I also wanted to mention that we created a senior board outside of the guidance office. If you want to check it out on your way out, or next time you're in the building, the seniors are posting up what they're doing next year, so you can see all the different colleges they're going to, and some service, people going into the service and that kind of thing. It's just a, it's really interesting to see. I know we'll give you the report later on where our graduates have been accepted and so on and so forth, which the guidance department puts out, but it's nice to see it as we say goodbye to those seniors. I also wanted to thank you, I'm sure Marty's going to say the same thing, but thank you for getting us through this budget season, as we got Conway to approve it last week, and so we're four for four.
Last night.
Last night. I was there. Still out. And student council wasn't here, but they were going to announce that we have a field day, spring field day, where we're going to take the part of the last period on the nineteenth to do garage band, outdoor games, and...
Now it's part of the last period?
Well, I don't want to say it's the entire last period. It's like an hour, okay?
You've got to work on that half period.
I know. They fight for the full period, and I make them at least go to the conference.
Visiting scholars thing didn't crack the lineup?
You know what? We have a visiting scholar coming. In fact, I don't have the details in front of me on it, but the library's putting together a visiting scholar program. We, I believe there's someone from CNN coming to meet with students about what they're doing. Is that what you're talking about?
No, 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 the, our, y'all just, the...
Oh, no, they didn't crack. I have lots of those things happening. Sorry.
Okay.
And then on the backside, I'll budge the upcoming dates of all the other things going on. So fast and furious as we wrap up this school. Questions, comments?
Okay, superintendent's report? Whoops.
Glad you brought that up. I should have had on the main part. Step Up Day is the sixth grade is coming to visit the school. At the same time, we have the eighth grade visit the high school. And so it's one big massive visit the next...
One big step.
One major step. And so we rotate the sixth grade through the teachers, and then we have them learn about the different clubs and sports. They have lunch here, and they do a tour of the building. So we do that. And then the eighth grade goes to the high school. They go through the core subjects to look at expectations and some of the things they can choose for next year, if they choose to do honors and that kind of stuff, and they get an idea. So they do that just for one period.
What's the date?
May twenty-fourth.
I'm obviously young enough to remember Step Up Day from Deerfield into Frontier, and it was, it was pretty scary, but pretty cool, too.
We tried to make it less scary.
Well, now you have...
I think old school, like, we tried to scare you. Scariest, scariest street.
Yeah, they probably brought down six of the football players.
No.
Bet you hit the door and gave you that...
No, no, no. It was the eight doors back then, though. But I just think it's a good thing, because then at least you get a once walk-through before to go here on your own, try to find a way. So, good job. Thank you. Okay, so superintendent?
Okay, so you have a written report, but I also have to add a couple of things. The only thing, and you can read this at your leisure, I just want to emphasize that the Rural Consortium Committee of Superintendents, we still continue to meet. We met yesterday. Yes, it was just yesterday, and we are meeting again in two more weeks. We are putting together additional language for our state legislators and trying to give them some ideas and suggestions about how charter schools are impacting us and gathering some more data. What we have heard very clearly from them is they don't want to hear any more complaining, and they want us to come up with some solutions. And so that's what we're working on hard. So there is a core group of us, about fifteen superintendents, primarily from the Berkshires, and I think the one, and Quavon is probably as far east as we go, working together. So my Conicani superintendent of Mohawk is leading this charge, and that's going well.
Is your legislative theory that you're working with the Wisconsin sparsity?
Yeah.
That's what you're doing?
Yeah, yeah. We're trying to do that, but we're trying to get them accurate data, too, because sometimes some of the sources, it's amazing how some of the data in some of the state sources are skewed and not accurate. So we're, we're trying to give them real, real-time data to work with. Yes, I agree with Darius. I'm very happy the budget season is over. Thank you very much. For everybody, we completed, like I said, the policy book last week, and we completed negotiations last Thursday. So thank you to everybody who served on all of those committees. All I can give you are cookies and my thanks, but you have that.
They were good the other night.
Yeah.
At least Conway gave you the standing O last night.
Standing O from Conway last night. That was very nice and very unexpected, so...
Conway?
That's right.
Yeah, I was probably taken aback by that.
That's right. Big love in Conway.
A lot of love to Conway. So you received the letter. Darius has been working with his neighbor, Mr. Charles Mark, for many months, and he has wanted to donate money to the school. He's, if you don't have a copy of this letter, I have copies here. I will have them go each way. Some of this was delayed because of some illness for a while, but his donation fits the qualifications of our, of the school committees being able to accept a donation. He wants to donate seventy thousand dollars for the purpose of the scholarship and to benefit the library. He is a longtime teacher. His wife is a longtime librarian. They are both in their nineties, both lovely people with interesting stories. I have met with our attorney, and he has read all of the correspondence. Now, we have some details to work out, like obtaining the check. We know that we cannot put it in too high interest yield on, we as a school not have that ability to do that. But before we can actually accept the check, I need the school committee to accept his donation.
Motion to accept the donation from this fabulous, incredibly wonderful human being, Charles Mark.
Thank you.
Any other discussions?
Didn't bring any arrows.
Do you have any arrows?
I want to know how we cut seventy thousand dollars.
I did, and you know, I asked him if he would be willing to sell us the land because it borders our playing fields, and he explained that he likes to walk in those woods because it reminds him of his childhood.
We'll let him walk.
And we wanted to develop the field. There would be no woods if we developed the field, so he...
We could beat him some, though.
We could keep him.
He came in for the benefit of the rest of you who don't know this story. He came in many, many years ago to a school committee, and he had a whole little, a quiver, little arrows in the archery class to keep, when they shoot, they keep whistling the target. It landed on his property. He came walking in with a whole quiver full of arrows, and he dumped them on the table. He wanted to know, "How are we going to stop this madness?" So he's under attack next door.
You obviously handled the situation well for him to come back.
He's a nice man. He's a very nice man.
He's a very nice man.
We dealt with him when we were building this. He's a very nice man.
And very generous, and he has done this in the past. He doesn't want a lot of, he doesn't really get any note or write. Yes, he does, and I just saw him on Thursday writing his bike. Do you want to say anything more, because you work directly with him?
No, I mean, when he came in, he just stopped in one day, and I, you know, I immediately called Marty, like, "Your neighbor was just here," because I was like, I had him repeat himself, because I wasn't sure if he actually was saying the numbers right. But no, it was really impressive. And also at that time, it was before we kind of hit a budget shortfall, I originally had hoped to kind of match what he was going to give to the library, because I mean, the library needs a refreshing, you know, let alone with the envelope has to be done. I wanted to kind of, you know, look at new furniture and that kind of stuff, but because we couldn't match the issue in the budget, and he really wants to get this going, not wait it off, so we'll try to figure out something. There's, you know, there's certainly lots of things that we can get in the library that we can...
There's a wish list?
There's a wish list, and so we can, especially something I can also make note of who, him and his, him and his wife are, and give some kind of recognition for him in here as well. So that's great. And in the foreign language, you know, right now, foreign language doesn't have a scholarship, and to add that to our scholarships we give at graduation, especially someone who's going to that field, I think it's a, it was an avenue we did, you know, something that we didn't have, and so that's also, it's really nice.
Because he, we cannot invest that money the way he wants to.
Yes, I've explained that to...
I just didn't want him to get caught by surprise.
Right, right, right.
Could I just make a request for that we perform a service? Just from many years dealing with donors, when you have a donor letter that request, that specifies a concern, and his specific concern was that the principal of the library money be held in a high-yielding Vanguard-like fund instead of a library, instead of a bank thing?
Explain that we can't, it's illegal for us to do that.
Right, but a letter, there needs to be like an official...
From us to him?
Response to him.
Well, there'll be a document drawn up that he'll, that we'll all have to sign, and then that forty thousand goes into reserves. It's not available for you. So from a financial perspective, we know what we're doing.
But the first step was to get you to agree to accept a forthcoming donation.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that like a concern like that, it has to be spoken with, we have to speak with the man about that. We can't just do...
Yeah, I understand what he's saying is to make sure that it gets clearly addressed, that we can't do his entire wish there, because I understand what he wants to do.
I do, too.
And I still, you know, I don't know if Mary could talk to somebody who may be able to look into this, but the, we, I'm part of a scholarship committee that runs off a trust fund, and how they do it is they put the trust in the outside of the school's name, and I don't know how we do that.
Foundation.
We don't have a foundation.
We don't have a foundation.
No, but well, I don't know why we wouldn't just put this with the rest of our other scholarships, and we do have a trust, it's the MMTT, that we use that's deposited, that we do get more interest than a bank, but it's not...
What he wanted to do is he wanted to get a trust that, you know, get, you know, get around five to seven percent, have that five percent, seven percent be the scholarship every year, so we, it's indefinite scholarship, and I understand. And so in order, I think, to do that, you have to have a private group that connects them to the school or something of that sort, right? That's what we're hearing?
Maybe you have to buy an annuity to yield that.
Yeah, that's a possibility.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so...
Because the idea is very nice. The idea of what he wants to do is very nice.
We're going to check into that, so that, that concern will be taken there.
And I think our attorney's going to have to draw our response once the check is actually issued, so...
So that should not bar us from voting on this now.
Correct.
So we've got a motion, a second. All those in favor? Okay. Okay, Marty?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring you up to date on the incident that I sent the email to you. This is the lesson in, in social media of how this kind of transpired so quickly. So Darius made me aware of the incident this morning. I came to the school. We talked about it. It did not seem to be, I mean, we knew there was no, any danger. Student was, had been addressed, and student was no longer on the property. Police had been here and confiscated the vertical. However, we did have some students who texted the Channel Twenty-two higher report, and then Channel Twenty-two, I then went off to my Deerfield Roofing Building meeting at the town hall, and had been contacted during my meeting that Twenty-two had been contacted. I was contacted, Darius was contacted, the police chief were contacted. So I immediately left that meeting, went into the Deerfield Police Department, got Darius on the phone. We had a conference call. We wanted to have the same information go out from all three of us. And so that, that response was drafted. We sent them almost all simultaneously. The reporter took our draft, put it on their Channel Two website as if it came from the Deerfield Police, no, Deerfield Chief of Police, and it did mention that she had gotten the same report from me. Then we drafted, knowing at that point that, you know, it was out there, we then drafted another report. Darius and I were on the phone doing the robo-message to the parents. So we wanted to be consistent with that. At no time was anyone in any danger. At no time was there anything on school property. Had this happened five, ten years ago, it probably would have been an internal incident and would have been known. But social media being what it is, you almost, you know, have to get ahead of it, which is sometimes impossible, because we're all in the middle of doing other things. It's not like we're waiting around during the school day for something to occur. And so things don't often happen or always happen in real time. Meetings interrupted, or you don't get the message right away. So I just wanted to explain a little further. I don't know if you wanted to add anything more to what...
No, the term I used is hijack your day, in a sense.
It did.
And we don't know, you know, essentially, it's a student discipline matter, and so we, you're not going to go into the specifics of it, you know, to protect that student and the mistake he made, and he's going to have consequences for it. I already gave too much for saying he. But, you know, we don't know where it's, what's going to go, and it's going to go nowhere, and that's perfectly fine with us, because we handled the situation. And then once it gets out, then we have to react and go on from there. So, so I mean, that's kind of, you know, that's where it's at, and that's how every, every situation is. It's, you know, you have to control the situation here, and then at the same time, you've got to get information out. Meanwhile, you know, a student texts their parents and goes off a rumor, and then you got to, and so it's very difficult about, we play that fine line of what we should be putting out there to everybody versus what is, what's better not being said, because in a situation like this, you know, a little bit of information is, you know, can spread like wildfire when, when it's wrong, so...
And that's another example of not being able to control what is out there in the media. I mean, you know, we've been portrayed in newspaper articles recently about having quoted or making it sound like we've talked to reporters when we have not. People can take partial truths from reading partial reports and print that and not print the whole story, and we have no control over that. So, but please know that whenever an incident like this occurs, Darius always contacts me immediately, and, or as immediately as he can, and we are always in contact with the police, and we do things as a unit, because we do not want misinformation or glorified or whatever. We want, we want the same consistent message from everyone.
Now, why were the police called to begin with?
Why were the police called to begin with?
Called to begin with? Was, was there a crime committed? Was there a belief or a suspicion that a crime may have been committed?
I, I mean, so being in a public meeting on film, I'm not sure I'm comfortable going into the specifics of why the police were called.
We could go into executive session if you want to talk about building security, and we're perfectly within our rights to talk about...
And I would be, I'd be more than happy to explain the details of everything, but when dealing with, when dealing with things of this sensitive nature, we take, while in the end it was a toy, when things are started, things were not viewed as a toy. And so, you know, we get, we take safety and student safety at the utmost level, and police are a part of that, especially when, again, I can't give the specifics of, I don't know if you want to do that.
I think we should thank you and you, for the way you handled it and put our trust in you, but I would like to thank you for sending that email as soon as you did, because as we have all said before in the past, it's just not nice to have somebody come up and tell you something that everybody else knows and you're on the school committee. So I was, I was totally fine with the email, and again, I thank you for the way you've handled things, and I personally would have involved the police in any incident such as that. So I think it was a good call, but that's my personal feeling, and you had to do what you felt was correct.
Listen, I, and for this committee, if you guys ever have any questions on these things, give me a call, and I can answer the best I can, or I'm more than happy to go to executive session and explain step by step, and we can critique versus policy about how we view things.
Phil, do you want to go into executive session?
Uh, sure.
Make the motion.
Well, I just want to know.
If you really want to know.
You can.
You can. You can. It's federally protected.
Mary is shaking her head. I just think the fewer people that have all the details, the better.
It's not, yeah. It's against the student's privacy rights. Judy?
Well, I agree, we can't talk about the individual involved, but if we want to talk about the security and the procedures that should be employed and how they were employed, we can talk about that, and, you know, it may be useful for some of the board members to understand some of that stuff, and I'm sure most of them do.
I don't want people to be uncomfortable about the situation, because a lack of talking about it makes us feel like we're hiding something. That's definitely not how I want to feel. So honestly, if you want, if you want to go to executive session, and I can, as long as I, you know, Marty, I'll come sit next to Marty, and so we can confer that I don't cross the line about student privacy rights as we talk about that, I can give a layout of, you know, what was done, and so that you guys feel safe about the school. So last thing I want, my committee feel like things were not done, that was in a safe manner, because I'm just feeling a little, the tension's weird in the room. So, you know what I mean? It's, I'm completely comfortable with how things were handled today. So I have no problem discussing it.
I am, too. I am absolutely...
It's a non-event. It's only an event because...
Non-issue.